You know who I saw?
Readvertise it.
In the Juliet, in the Monty here in the past.
Do you know who's doing that?
Come on, we have to have four have a forum. And we said Suzanne was gifted.
You know who I saw in the X before yesterday? It was Thursday. Charlie Clary. He was with, um, he was with Mark. Yeah, he was with Mark. First time I've seen him in years. I'd affect, I'd be working actually. Table.
Instead of continuing at the table, you have to put a date certain. We'll readvertise them when they act.
Hey, Lee.
Tom.
Hey.
We have a forum.
How's it going? You got one minute. You have one minute. Yep. No, no. Continue. Mac. Dollar General was continuing not. Dollar General was continued. Dollar General continued.
God, I spent so much time on here.
We'll call a meeting to order. Would you please stand for the invocation and the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, as we come together to conduct the business of Walton County tonight, we just ask that whatever we say and do here tonight would be pleasing in your sight, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, before we start, please silence all communication, all your cellphones, iPads, whatever you happen to have in your pocket. Please make sure they're, they are off. We will be setting a time certain of 9:00 PM. At 9 o'clock, we close the doors. So if we don't get through, it'll be continued the next time. We have one set of minutes to be acted upon, commissioners. That's Thursday, July the 11th minute, minutes. Do I have a motion? I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. All in favor, aye? Aye. Could you pass this down, please? Mac, announcements, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mac Carpenter for the Plating Department. As far as announcements, we have several items that we would like to request to table in the legislative section of the agenda, and that would be item number three, the parking ordinance. Item number four.
Let's take them one at a time, Mac, and we'll take a vote on them, okay? You want to table item number three, parking ordinance?
Yes, sir. And we will bring it back when it's ready to, and we'll readvertise.
Commissioners, they want to table parking ordinance, item number three. Need a motion? Have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Sally. All in favor, aye? Aye. Go ahead.
Item number four, the ordinance admitting land uses in the Land Development Code. We'd also request that that be tabled.
Commissioners?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, aye? Aye.
Item number five, the comforts of plan mixed use acreage criteria ordinance. We'd also request that that be tabled, and we'll bring that one back when it's right.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye? Aye. Mac?
Item number six, the floodplain management ordinance. We'd like to request that that be tabled also, and we will bring that one back when it's ready and we'll readvertise.
Commissioners?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye? Aye. Mac?
Item number six, the floodplain management ordinance. We'd like to request that that be tabled also, and we will bring that one back when it's ready and we'll readvertise.
Commissioners?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye? Aye.
And under the quasi judicial section of our agenda, item number eight, the Dollar General Development Order application. This one was heard last Thursday night at the Design Review Board, and they elected to continue that, to allow the applicant to address some comments regarding lighting. So that will be heard next month in September at the DRB. We'd like to continue this item to September 12th to allow the DRB at time to make a recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue the Dollar General till a time certain of September the 12th, 5:00 PM here. All in favor? Aye. It is unanimous.
And that brings us back to legislative item number one, the South Walton Fire Department's small scale amendment. This is a project being reviewed by Vivian Shammel, and I'm going to turn it over her to let her make a small presentation.
We're going to do the, we're going to do the quasi judicial first for the legislative? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's up to y'all which ones we're going to take first.
Okay. Legislative.
Okay. South Walton Fire Department's small scale amendment.
Thank you. Vivian Shammel, Planning Department. This is small scale amendment 2013-14. The applicant is Walton County, and we are representing the South Walton Fire District on this use. They are asking to change the current use from institutional to village mixed use. The property is located at 110 South Highway 393, near the intersection of Highway 98. This is a property that the South Walton Fire Department, they, they used to have a small facility there. There is still a, a building there, and South, the District Five Road Crew used to also lease a small building on that property until they moved to Community Way. What happened was on March 1st, 2011, when the Board of County Commissioners adopted ordinance 2011, excuse me, 2011-04, amending the county land use map. This was during the year amendments and was part of the whole adoption series that the county adopted that day. An error occurred on this property when all properties that were deemed to be institutional, being churches and fire departments, et cetera, all of them were changed on the map, and it was a, a clean sweep. But what happened was this, this particular parcel should not have been a part of that since they were not operating the fire department there, but had been leasing that property, and it had been village mixed use and should have stayed village mixed use. So this is just basically correcting an error that occurred when that map was adopted. That is all I have.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Viv? All right, thank you. Does anyone in the audience care to speak to this particular item? Not, we will close its public hearing. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
I'm there for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. It is unanimous.
Commissioners, our next item is the US 3, US 98-331 Scenic Corridor Outdoor Display of Merchandise ordinance. This is a proposal to modify Chapter 13, .03, .00, .10 of the Land Development Code to allow limited unscreened outdoor display of merchandise, goods, or products within a 100 square foot area adjacent to the building facade of a business. And that would be the side of the building that faces US 98. At present, the Land Development Code does not allow unscreened outdoor display of merchandise in any context. We had a previous director's determination that allowed unscreened outdoor display of merchandise underneath an awning, as his determination was that if it's under the awning, it's not outside. That determination was never memorialized in writing, even though it was policy of code enforcement for probably a couple of years. When we were asked by this board to produce a copy of that policy, we could not locate one, and it was the feeling of this board that we ought to be enforcing the Land Development Code as written, and so we decided to do that. However, given that this policy had existed for some two years, we decided to give notice to those people that were in violation of the ordinance, to give them a couple of weeks to correct it before we came back to actually issue notices of violation. That in, in effect, created a class of people that went to, that felt like they were injured, went to the BCC, asked for some relief to allow some limited outdoor display of merchandise. As a result of that meeting, the BCC authorized us to bring something back for consideration, and that's what we're doing. Now, this item was heard by the Design Review Board as the first step in that process last Thursday night. At the Design Review Board, as far as the public testimony, it was 100% opposed to any change of the ordinance. In the meantime, we've also had a petition signed related to the Dollar General store, which was continued tonight, and the number of signatures on that petition is up over 400 now, in opposition of the Dollar General store. And in the comments associated with that position, almost every comment objected to outside display of merchandise as the policy of that store and what they're doing at the other two stores in the county, and they did not want that in Inlet Beach, did not feel like it was appropriate for US 98. And they were consistent in the opinion that prohibition of outside display of merchandise reduces the amount of roadside clutter, provides a more clean appearance of US 98, and that's one of the things that sets us apart from Panama City Beach, Destin, and Okaloosa Island. The DRB was unanimous in recommending denial of this change. And with that, it's now in your hands.
Well, commissioners, before y'all get started, let me just ask one quick question that I have. And I'm not, why are we, why did we have this? It's the Design Review Board unanimously voted to disapprove, and now we've got this before, and I understand that this is something you came up with as a makeshift change?
Well, this is exactly what was presented to the DRB.
Okay.
Same thing's being presented to this board. They make a recommendation to both the Plating Commission and to the BCC as to their review on a particular item, just as this board will make a recommendation to either approve it, deny it, or recommend a change to the BCC. It is scheduled for BCC hearing next week for a first reading, and at that point, the BCC will either decide to set a, an adoption hearing, modify the language, send it back to us to retool it, or deny it.
Okay, so, let me make sure that I understand this. Maybe the rest of the commissioners understand, but I got to make sure. So, in this, you have given some lead wave to merchandise outside.
Yes, sir.
Some lead wave for stores who do not have canopies, which canopies don't mount to anything anyway. That's what we clarified last time.
I mean, when we discussed this at the BCC for permission to bring back a proposed amendment to the Land Development Code, we took the proposal that had some, two or three years ago, been roughly drafted by the Scenic Corridor Association to provide some kind of limited outdoor display. They were talking about under awning. We never actually got that formal recommendation from the Scenic Corridor Association, so we took that language to the BCC. At the BCC, the discussion moved from allowing it under awning to what about all those folks that don't have that architectural feature? And, and to be fair, one commissioner suggested, well, maybe we could allow them to have 100 square feet where they don't have an awning, because our concern was that for all those people that didn't have an awning, that wouldn't be allowed to do that, the next step would be to come back and do something architecturally to their building to, to be able to qualify having outdoor display.
You're sticking, go, to go putting an awning out.
So when we crafted the language, we also looked at enforceability, and there may still be some enforceability problems with this particular language as we go forward through the process, but we combined the two and into one, 100 square foot opportunity to have some limited outdoor display of merchandise, whether you've got an awning, whether you don't have an awning.
You don't have one, or what?
Be the same 100 square feet.
Okay. All right, commissioners, y'all have any questions for Mac?
How did you come up with 100 square feet?
That was a number suggested by one of the commissioners, which could have been plucked from air. That's just a guess at what might be reasonable. One of the concerns, though, that has been raised by a member of the public is, does everybody get 100 square feet? And that is the way it's written. What about the guy that has a 200-foot long bil, long frontage compared to the guy that may have 30 feet? I mean, this has the potential to, to make us look like Panama City Beach.
You, you can't skin every cat the same way.
So if you choose to recommend something, you may choose to, to recommend a modified You may like it the way it's written, you may not like it at all.
We, we appreciate the effort that you made on it, Mac, because I noticed it had you in the crosshairs.
Well, it's been a difficult thing for code enforcement over the last few years.
Yep.
It's been difficult to explain to the public why some people can have it and why some people can't. So I think we either need to come up with a, some kind of standard to allow it, or we need to stick with the language we've got and read it strictly as it's written.
Do away with all of it. Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Mac? Okay, thank you, Mac.
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the public care to comment on this particular item? Please go forward, state your name for the record, please.
Tom Waldrop.
What was your name, sir?
Tom. T-O-M Waldrop. My son and I own the Electric Car Company on Highway 98 within the Scenic Corridor. I was, made a presentation to the commissioners that may have started all of this, and I, I think I would be, could be said, I represent that class of people, forty-some businesses that received a warning of violation and actually brought this, you know, this concern to the surface. There, out of forty-some businesses, Mac indicated that all of the comments at the meeting with the DRB were negative. Out of forty-some businesses, nobody knew there was a meeting and knew this was being brought up, so I, I would like to have that on the record. My son and I were part of a request to deviate from the same rule when we started our business in '09, and we ended up, I reckon, winning a battle but lost the war. From that, we were, we received permission and signed off by various department heads from the code enforcement group that allowed us at our other location to display three vehicles under the porch. We moved to a new location, and we assumed that that just carried over, but we later found out it's on a property by property basis, not a business by business basis. I was afforded the opportunity to listen to the comments that were made at the, the Design Review Board's meeting, and it was pretty obvious that there's a great deal of concern about enforcement, and I didn't hear really any significant conversation about the economic health of local business. We've got, we employ a lot of people down here. We represent a lot of dollars into this, you know, economic engine, you know, in, in South Walton, and it feeds all of the county, and there are just some things we don't understand. We, we don't understand when you talk about scenic vistas, which is the reason for this corridor, or that's what it states in the, in the code, why 98 is more scenic than 38. 38 rides you right by the beach. 98 just runs you through a bunch of pine trees. Why is there a 400-foot setback on 98 when there's a zero-foot setback on 38 excluding right-of-way? Why, why is that? I, you know, I don't know, I don't have those answers. That all came out of Walton County government in, in, you know, in this document. So I think this class of people, these businesses that were directly impacted a couple of months ago, you know, really deserve an answer, if we can get one, from somebody that maybe was at the beginning of this in 1994, and it's been perpetuated since. Is it fair for business? And is it really, is it really detrimental to this county for there to be some type of display? I'll agree, it needs to be defined and it needs to be organized, but I, we think it's beneficial for the economy, and, and we think the economic health of our community is more important than, and of course, we have a bias, than making it easy for a few code, code enforcement officers to make a decision to write a trigger, pull a trigger on writing a ticket or not. We want, we want to be treated fairly. I think it's that simple. You know, before, my concern was that everybody that got a ticket was not everybody that had something on display outside. There were some businesses that didn't get a warning, and they had butane tank bottle dispensers outside, they had ice machines outside, they had Coke machines outside, they had Redbox movie machines outside, and so when I listened to the conversation of the Design Review Board, their concerns were the clutter that the regular business is going to have, and they voted unanimously against that, but yet they took up discussing, well, how can we, I'm going to put it in my words, disguise an ice machine so it doesn't look like an ice machine? You know, are we going to have out anything outside those doors that's for sale, or are we not? And I, I think that's kind of what it boils down to, and we just want, as a business community, I, I think I have the support of the ones that got warnings before, that we would like to have an opportunity of some sort to display some type of merchandise. We're regulated 400 feet back, that's pretty strong. Where my business was on 38, I could have everything sitting one foot back from the, from the right-of-way, and that's where the real vista is, in, down here in South Walton. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for this gentleman?
Yes.
Sir?
Do you, do you think 100 square feet is enough too much?
I can tell you how that would affect me, Tom. I would be able to put on display two vehicle, which is about what we do now. We've got 60 feet of frontage on our building, and we've got a 12-foot porch, and we, we put two cars out there. And, and I, I think the people that have certain types of goods will tell, tell you that people driving down the highway, they see, they see something that, that catches their eye, and it's not necessarily a sign. I've just got through spending about $20,000 on signs, and, and so I, when we ask people, well, how did you hear about us? Why, why'd you come in? Well, I just saw that car out there. And, and that means a lot to a little business, you know? So 100 feet would work in, in my case.
Anybody else have a question for this gentleman?
Do you think, yes, I'm trying, how much time? 100 feet don't sound like a lot, but a lot could be done in 100 square feet, too. What, do you think there should be any restriction at all on outdoor display on that yet?
I know that, I know there's some in the group that will disagree with me, but I, I do feel like there are certain, I don't know the correct word, offensive things that could be displayed that would not need to be displayed, shouldn't be displayed. I mean, I, I understand all of the rules with the waving flags and all this other stuff, you know? I mean, if, if I would have wanted to, to, to be in business in Panama City, I'd be in business in Panama City. I've been involved, I've been in business here for 26 years in Walton County, and, you know, the, the Panama City looking like Panama City or looking like Okaloosa Island, you know, that doesn't really wash with me. We have got a very unique community south of the bay. It's beautiful. That's where, you know, I live here, and both of my children live here, and all five of my grandchildren are here. We've raised our family in Walton County. We, we have, we have a vested interest to see it be the best. So I think, I think if we, if we can identif, identify what's acceptable and give us, give us an opportunity to prove to the county that the business community can even police itself some. You know, we don't want to cut off, you know, cut off our nose to spider face. We're not stupid.
I understand that. I, I don't disagree with you. What I'm trying to get to is, was what, what type of restriction could there be that would work for the businesses down there that use that for display?
You know, I, I, you could probably segregate it by type of business, by type of product, by size of product, by area of display, by location of display. You know, we had, we had understood initially, and this is back in '09, you know, it had to be undercover, and then it went from undercover to, if it wasn't undercover, then you were limited to 100 square feet outside. Then it went from 100 square feet outside to 100 square feet, whether it's undercover or outside. And so it's, you know, it's kind of been a moving target, and I don't know if I've answered your, your question, Mr. Stewart.
I mean, I, it, it's hard to define what's acceptable and what's not, because everybody has different ideas, but I'm, I'm just curious as to what your thoughts were.
I certainly think electric vehicles should be acceptable.
Anyone else have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Will you station room for the records?
I'm Debbie Tibode.
Pull it now, move it, you're short. Okay. Thank you.
Could you spell your last name, please? T-H-I-B. O-D-E-A-U. Thank you. I am the store manager of Retail Therapy, which is a fairly new business. We've been open for about a year, and what we display outside are a couple of Adirondack chairs. And what we display outside are a couple of Adirondack chairs, natural cypress, some of them are painted once in a while, but we have been told that we can't put the two Adirondack chairs outside. And what we do is we put these outside as samples and customers come and they sit in these chairs, they come in the store and they order them. So it's not like we have the whole front of our facade full of outdoor furniture. So my concern is that perhaps Adirondack chairs, like Tom said, could be an exception. Tom pretty much said everything the rest of us are feeling. We are included in that class of people that really want business to work here in Walton County. And I have to tell you that my husband, who builds those Adirondack chairs, wanted to open up a business here in Walton County where he would make little children's playhouses and set them out, up as displays outside, little colorful children's playhouses. But under this, these ordinances, he would not be allowed to do that. So therefore, he would not be able to open up his business here in Walton County. So I really hope that you will consider these ordinances and, and perhaps make some exception to it, even if it's the 100 feet. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for this lady? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this? Please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Casey Crisp, C-R-I-S-P. And I am the owner of et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is on 98, where the post office is, same strip mall. And I have Adirondacks also out in front of my store. Unlike Retail Therapy, I have Adirondacks across the storefront. And most of the customers that come in that I ask, what made you notice me? It was the Adirondacks. Otherwise, I do have a, a proof sign which lights up at night, which is wonderful and shows, but during the day, it doesn't draw the attention. And I am afraid that if this ordinance stands, that it will definitely affect the customers noticing my store. And in turn, I have all local vendors and artists that rent space in there to sell their items. I only have outdoor Adirondack chairs out front that are for sale, merchandise for sale. And I don't know if in the ordinance, it can state something about outdoor furniture or equipment or golf carts or something, but I'm just hoping that to be conducive to us smaller businesses so we can succeed, that this could be addressed.
How, how, how wide an area does your store cover? Do you know right off the top of your head?
I think it's 60 feet long.
Okay, so it-
And I just have a row of Adirondacks across the front.
Okay. Well, like Commissioner asked the other gentleman up there about 100 feet. So you're, you wouldn't actually have 100 feet, you would have like 60 feet.
But if you do the, with the chair sitting out two and a half feet, it would be over 100 square feet.
Oh, okay. All right.
Definitely is over 100 square feet.
Yeah, okay.
What was your understanding of the ordinance when you opened your business?
I didn't know there was an ordinance. I followed another business that had been in that same location that had Adirondack chairs out in front of its store for the whole time they were there. So I did, was not aware of any ordinance that there couldn't be Adirondack chairs out front. I've been open for a little over a year and a half now too, so.
Anyone else have any questions for this lady? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this particular ordinance? Come forward, please. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Mary Nielsen. And I emailed all of you a set of photographs, a PowerPoint presentation, I don't know whether you chose to look at it or not, of a number of businesses up and down 98, from 331 to the Okaloosa County line. On that day, the Retail Therapy didn't have much out front at all. They actually were in pretty good shape. This was the second speaker, Ms. Thibodeau. Today, I went by and there's a lot more stuff out there and it's not just Adirondack chairs earlier this afternoon. One questions went from those photographs, if you did look at them, the excessiveness at the Dollar Generals, at the CVS, the trashy stuff and every old which way kind of a bin they put it in, and some of the other places, there seems to be a competitive nature. If you put out 10 feet, then the next guy near you takes out 20 and it grows and it grows and it grows. And those who are selling the same type of merchandise seem to be competing to get more and more. If one does it, the next one says, well, gee, they do it. I've been good, I haven't done it. Let's look at the opposite. Let's look at all the good people, the good, not, not that these aren't great people. Let's look at the people who don't have outdoor merchandise but are vendors and sellers on 98. Let's look at Shrimpers, for example. They've been here a long time and they sell seafood. They have a name that's called Shrimpers. And people from all over the United States who come here either one time or 10 times. They know how to find Shrimpers. If they want shrimp, they know how to look it up and they know how to get there. We don't have a aquarium out in the front. We don't have a blow-up red shrimp out front. We don't have lobster out front. And they all find it, they mow their grass, they tend to their parking lot, they resurface it periodically. They have a neat, clean establishment and they seem to do a whale of a business without one item out front that says how to find shrimp, other than their name. I think that, that Mr. Waldrop is, and I'm not attacking Mr. Waldrop, he has electric carts. If I want to go find an electric cart, I'm gonna go to the Yellow Pages, I'm gonna go Google, I'm gonna go online. I think any average intelligent person who's looking for a product has enough resources today with iPhones, iPads, Google, every other which way, to find products that they want. Yes, I do accept the fact that if you see floaties out front and stuff, you might just zoom in there and get your floating, okay? It's less than looking it up. But we have excessive growth of these products. The Dollar General and the Alvin's competing in Miramar Beach are just excessive. And it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So right now, we have a rule that has said for years, and these, the Miramar Beach Dollar General is new. And the one on Santa Rosa Beach is new. So there's really no excuse of did they find, did they know the rules or didn't they? They came before you all and everybody else to get approved to begin with. So the, the merchandise is growing, growing to the point where you can hardly find the front door on some of these places. And I can understand that if you are one who obeys the rules and you keep a clean storefront and you use your signage appropriately, you advertise, you have to advertise your business in appropriate locations so that people find you. You don't need to put all that stuff out front. So do we take away from our scenic vista and what we are as Walton County? And do we say, okay, it's a free-for-all? 10 feet, 100 feet, 60 feet? I mean, if they take up a whole strip center, do they want to have this stuff on the whole entire strip center? And if you have 60 Adirondack chairs, do you get the same buck, bang for your buck of people turning in as if you have two Adirondack chairs or three Adirondack chairs out front? I know that husbands don't like to shop and they like a place to sit. And they like to have a bench out front and wait for the wives or the ladies in the family to shop. So is it wrong to have two Adirondack chairs out front? But do you need 60 Adirondack chairs out front to advertise your product? And then do you need the bird nests and the lamps and all the other stuff that's accumulating? And if you looked at Avazatic, it's just from end to end and around the corner of that shopping center. So I think that the easiest way to enforce something is to say, no, we don't have that. Utilize your signage and utilize your advertising. And I'm not a mean wicked person. It's just that how do you control it? And how do you, how do you get enforcement to enforce? And the more rules and the more little extraneous things you can have, it grows and it grows and then you're right back where we, where we are today with excessive display of merchandise. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mary? Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this?
Can I speak to just a couple of things? You may remember a few months back, we brought forth the change to chapter 13 signage, where it related to master signage plans and the ability of non-designated anchor tenants to appear on a multi-occupant center sign. We proposed a change to that to allow the center owner to designate tenants that occupied more than one bay in that center to be allowed, for the purposes of carrying on the monument sign, to be designated an anchor just for that particular purpose. At the center where Retail Therapy and Electric Cart Company is located, they both now have separate monument signs that they can now appear on. We did that in an effort to help through these economic times. And that applies to anyone in a multi-occupant center that can convince their owner to allow them to do that. But the code has been relaxed in that regard to provide more visibility for other tenants other than the one designated anchor in a center that's 25,000 square feet or less. So that is something that we have recently done to provide more visibility on Highway 98.
Mac, am I reading this right, that the intent is that it's not on a per-building basis, but each, I mean typically retail buildings divide up into 25 or 30-foot days. Each business, which could be 25 feet, can have 100 square feet.
That's one of my concerns about the language that has, the way it's presently written.
That's, that's what I'm reading here.
You're exactly right.
So, okay, so if you've got five foot, three foot for your door, basically you can run for the, for the next 22 feet or next 27 feet, four foot deep and have a solid bunch of beach balls.
Right. Yes, sir.
And styrofoam, whatever.
Providing you're not obstructing the sidewalk in the context of that additional language that's in there. But yes, sir, you're exactly right. And what we see now, if you drive up and down US 98, it's not everybody doing it because it's not legal today. And the policy that code enforcement operated under for two years or so was never written down as a policy for enforcement. The particular code case related to outside display of merchandise from Mr. Waldrop's original electric cart location, he applied for a deviation from the code to allow outdoor display of merchandise. The design review board denied that deviation. The director at the time, Gary DeMires, made a determination that parking them under the awning was not actually outside and therefore would not fall under the prohibition of outside display of merchandise. But if you go back and strictly read what is written, that determination was inconsistent with what the language actually says, because it's actually pretty clear.
Yeah, that, that was a no-no.
Whether under roof or not, if it's merchandise or storage, it has to be screened from view. Just point of clarification.
Okay, we got a lady behind you, or a gentleman behind you. Oh, yeah. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Merlin Allen. I live at 5410 Tibbely Terrace in Miramar Beach. And Mr. Chairman, I'm the president of the Senior Corridor Association and Miss Sally and the other members of the thing. We, the Senior Corridor Association would like to thank you for all the hard work that you do coming to these meetings and making these determinations for all the citizens of Walton County. I'm here tonight to speak against this ordinance. I've lived in Walton County for 30 years and one of the first guys I met when I moved here was Tom Patton. And the second was probably Lee Perry. We, and I'm sure many of y'all have lived here longer than that, but we have lived here long enough that there was not a single traffic light on US Highway 98 in South Walton County. It was all two-lane road from the Destin all the way to Inlet Beach, there was no traffic light. So we've seen a lot of growth along the senior corridor. I've been involved in the Senior Corridor Association since its inception about 13 years ago. And we think that we have a, a good plan for an orderly and growth of this corridor. I don't know why we're here speaking to this particularly tonight, other than it's up here for, you know, for your consideration. I thought we had worked with the county to come with an ordinance that would allow for people to have outdoor display of merchandise as long as it was located underneath a canopy, not a awning, a canopy, a permanent, a fixed canopy that is attached to their building. And I don't know where this 100 square feet has now come from, but I thought we had that ordinance and agreed to with, with the county. And I think that it needs clarification. I do not think that we need any, any outdoor display, unscreened outdoor display at 100 square feet somewhere out on the property. Who knows what we could have out there? As you mentioned, beach balls, we could have mattresses, we can go on and on and on. We've done a great job in South Walton County of separating ourselves from the other two counties that have joined us. And all you have to do is look at the TDC receipts and you can see that we're outstripping them. We are attracting a very high clientele to this, to this area. And I don't think they want to come down here and see a flea market out along our highways. So I would encourage you tonight to vote against this, give us an opportunity to work with the county and with the businesses. We want the businesses to succeed. Let us work with them and bring back something that I think you and all of us will be proud of in the display of merchandise. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this ordinance? Please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Yes, Betty Letcher, and I want to re, can you hear me?
Please.
Okay. Reconfirm what Mr. Allen was saying, that I'm totally against it because I really feel like we have an ordinance now and it's not being done the right way. So if you take away what we have, then what are we gonna have? And we are getting ready to have, quote, "a Dollar General at Inlet Beach." And there's so much residential around where they building, I'd hate to see all this going in. So I did want to express, I would hope we keep the same ordinance and you'll vote against this. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for this lady? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Sherri Judkins and I too am against changing the ordinance. I think everybody's pretty much said everything I have to say. I would like to present the board with some pictures of how out of hand it got with allowing them to just have the-
Yeah, you know those will become part of the record.
Yeah, I just want you to see, when you give an inch, they take a mile. And we just, we need the code enforced the way it, the way it is. And that's really all I have to say. I'd like for you to look at the pictures and consider what happens when you give them a little bit of leeway. They take, you know, not, not all of them, but some of them just go, get completely out of hand. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Sherri? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this? Please come forward. Come on, come on, come on, come on. State your name for the record, please. Don't, don't run off, we'll, we'll get to you, sir.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
My name's Kathy Gonzalez. I'm the owner of Retail Therapy in Santa Rosa Beach. I think I'd just like to clear up something here. It seems that the assumption is that we want to all, all the people who have businesses along 98 want to start putting out plastic noodles and beach toys, and that isn't the case at all, I can assure you. I'm perfectly happy right now. I have concrete gardens, statues, and we have some hanging baskets of flowers that we wanted to put along the front. And that's the extent of what I'd like to put out in front of our building. If, other people have got the impression that if you approve 100 square feet of allowance to put things outside, it's not gonna be noodles and beach toys for us. So I'd just like you to know that we are in an area that we love and we want to keep the integrity, we want to keep it looking nice. And just because we're business owners doesn't mean we're here to trash it. And I'd just like to, you know, I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody, but we appreciate this area, we love it, we don't want it to go downhill. We've put in our business, our heart and our soul into this place and we're, we're gonna fight to keep it looking great, not to make it go downhill or make it look like a gypsy camp or any other thing that people seem to be assuming. So that's all I had to say. I wasn't prepared, I didn't know about this meeting until this afternoon, so I wish I'd had time to take some pictures and let you know and assure you that we have no intention of turning this into some kind of circus in front of our store.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone have any questions for this lady? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Josh Norman. And I was just wanted to consider what's being said here today, discussions on the 100 square feet. I guess a question I would have, is there any sort of limitation to the units that are put out there? How many units? Because you can get a lot in 100 square feet or you can get a little, depending on what on what you're trying to put out there. So when you, you asked the question, um, is a hundred square feet enough or too much? The, depends on what you have, so is, is there a unit? And then the, the awning, no awning, obviously, you have limitless height, so how high can these displays be? Another thing, if this does go forward, needs to be considered. Obviously, everyone wants productive businesses on the highway, but they also want a, a beautiful scenery. Uh, I think those are two options to look at when you're considering displays. And I do think under an awning is obviously something that, even under an awning, you want to have limited units out there. And what type of units, I guess? That's all I need to say.
Anyone have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this? Do we close the public hearing? Commissioners, I would entertain a motion, discussion?
I'd like to have some discussion before we add a motion.
Go ahead. Let's discuss.
Well, first of all, I, back in the early nineties, um, the scenic ninety-eight movement started with, uh, myself, Keith Howard, and Lady Gardner, and the group of other concerned citizens that we've basically, uh, provided a lot of initial input. The ordinance that was passed at that time has been, has been fine-tuned and repassed and fine-tuned, but a lot of effort's gone into it, and a lot of pain's gone into it, and everybody's part. So it's not, this is not a world without pain. I mean, every, everybody in, uh, the Highway ninety-eight corridor took down their sign and remade their sign, unless they were fortunate enough to come along after it was passed. But the county gave them, uh, a certain number of years for the signs to mature, and I'm a date certain, they all changed. And, and we've gone along, and we've done a whole bunch, and we've gotten rid of flashing signs and flags and whatever. Things have definitely gotten a little sloppier when you look at the ice machines and red boxes and newspaper stands and all the things that, that front, that sit on the sidewalk in a convenience store. If you look at it, you never really walk to the front door of a convenience store. On the sidewalk, you walk in the drivelines. So that's an abuse that's under a canopy that wasn't originally planned for. Not that some of those things, like, I think a newspaper machine is probably an appropriate thing, you get around it already. The new red box machines are just on the sidewalk. The, there are things that, that, I, I do think that, that there are things like the electric cars, maybe two Adirondack chairs or whatever, that are relatively harmless. But I, I, the question is, where do you go with it? Because we absolutely, when you give them a hundred square feet, they're gonna use a hundred square feet. And every, and they're gonna spread it out, two feet deep by fifty feet or whatever, in the front of the Dollar General or what, and they're gonna be selling, they're gonna be selling stuff you sell in the Dollar General store, or other stores, and the CVS is another example of that. So I think, uh, we have, and from my standpoint, we have two choices, either to say no, or work on, work on a material type by material type. I mean, I have no problem with two electric cars sitting in front of a business. Uh, I have no problem with two Adirondack chairs sitting in front of a business. I'm trying to figure out what we can do, if you've got two pieces of merchandise, or two, two widgets in front of your business, but somehow, I think you need to send this traffic to maybe refine somewhat the rule of a hundred square feet. Uh, and, and I, I, I think the hard canopy is a pleasant thing, because it keeps the things fresh and, 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 uh, out of the weather and so on, and it's not quite as much in your face as the planes aside, and maybe the buildings are with, with, uh, baskets and containers of different gizmo. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Um, well, I have, I have a couple of things. I, I agree with, with Commissioner Patton. A lot of effort went into the preparation for the scenic corridor down ninety-eight, and, uh, I know, since I've been on the planning commission, we have gone back and forth through this three or four different times with different subjects, different, uh, businesses that's come forward. Uh, I understand that some of the businesses, uh, benefit by having some wares out for people to see. But I also understand, when you give just a little, there's always someone who's gonna take a lot. And as Tom pointed out, I, I don't necessarily want to point out anyone, I don't point out CVS, or Dollar General, or anyone else, but, uh, to my way of thinking, the ordinance as, as intended was zero. And if we're going to try to amend that and come up with little changes, I think we're leaving ourselves wide open. My, my feeling is, it's zero, zero. That's what it means. No newspapers, no, no red box movie rentals, no, uh, electric carts, no nothing. If, what, you know, we have, we have to be very consistent. We can't say, well, we can let somebody have two of this and two of that. So, commissioners?
Well, newspapers, I think, are exempt.
Yeah, there, there's some case law, constitutional law says you essentially can't prohibit a newspaper.
First amendment?
Yes, sir. There's a first amendment issue.
First amendment.
But I agree. I agree that I think this is too simplified, it doesn't take into account the frontage stores. You know, it could be a percentage based on the frontage that they have, and I, I think what Merlin Allen said is, is good that it should be sent back to the Scenic Corridor Committee, let them come up with something that works, so that it's, it's beneficial to businesses as well as, uh, you know, the aesthetics of the, the roadways. Maybe by, you know, limiting the number of items, like we said. I mean, I, I don't, you could put a thousand noodles in a hundred square foot, you know, Ben, but you wouldn't need that many. You know, maybe if you limit it to, you know, two or three, you know, you can get your point across without destroying the, the scenic corridor. So I, I, I agree that, I don't like the way this is written, I think it's too simplistic, doesn't take into account what needs to be done here, and, uh, I'd rather see it go back to committee and be worked on.
I'll make the motion that we, uh...
Wait a minute, does anyone else have any other discussion points?
I agree, I think...
No, I'm with Lee.
Yeah, I think this is way too simple. I picture our arguments on both sides, and the committee can probably come up with something that's much more workable for the business.
I make the motion that we send it back to, uh, that it be sent back to committee to be worked up, and decide to come up with something extremely limited way of showing the business's wares, uh, less than a hundred square feet.
Mr. Patton, I, I would assume included in that, uh, motion would be a, a, that you would not recommend this ordinance to the county commission as written.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
I would like to ask, is there a timeframe put on that, where it's not sitting there for six months, and people waiting to see if they can do business or not?
Right. I, I think that's really, I, I think for us to do that, all we're doing is recommending for the county, the county commission to make that motion, if they want to put a timeframe on it. I think we just start workshop, and things are talking about it, it's tough, giving proper notice and so on, it's, it's tough. We are where we are right now. If anything's allowed, it'll be an improvement, and the good news is that the season's over next week, so, so that will be time. And I think there's going to be enough business pressure to push that through.
Okay, is there, do all the commissioners understand the, the motion? The motion was we're gonna...
Motion to, uh, send the ordinance back to be worked on and refined, and recommend continuance or denial to the board of county commissioners?
We, I'd recommend it be, to be reworked, that, that it be severely modified.
That the current ordinance be...
That the, that the current ordinance be denied.
Thank you.
Let, let's, let's make sure we got this straight now, because...
Let, let her, let her read.
Current draft, I think, would be a more...
Current draft, yeah. Not an ordinance.
Be denied by the county commissioner?
Yes.
Okay.
That they not recommend it.
Teddy, I don't think you have a word about it right now, code enforcement's not enforcing it anyway.
And I want to set the motion, and she gets it then.
Okay, um, so, motion to... Recommend that the current ordinance be denied and...
Current draft.
Current draft ordinance. Uh, be denied and set back, uh, to be severely revised, or...
Severely revised, go ahead.
Okay. Is that, is that all?
That's enough.
To, to, uh, yes, to minimize the, uh, to minimize and not prevent the display of some outdoor merchandise.
Ms. Maryfield, is that still your second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can you have a motion in a second? Any further discussion?
Should be some merchandise outdoors. Uh, I don't bring that.
You got that, Carrie?
Mm-hmm. Uh, but, uh, to minimize but not prevent the outdoor display of merchandise.
Some outdoor display.
Not to prevent some outdoor merchandise. Okay.
Okay, commissioners, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Here's. Okay, we'll skip to number...
Seven.
Yeah, okay, this is quasi judicial, uh, we have to have people sworn in.
Anyone who plans on testifying before, before the board on any quasi judicial matter that's going to be considered, please stand and raise your right hand, and when you come to the podium, please say your name and your current address. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Has any commissioner had any ex parte contact with anyone regarding any item before the commission tonight? Hearing none, and are there any objections to the items as noticed for tonight's meeting? Thank you very much, Mr. Carver.
Chair, I need to step back and call a court sometime. Call a court sometime. Okay.
Mac Carpenter for the Planning Department.
You want to wait? Hold on, Mac, just a minute, excuse me, Mac.
Yeah, I'll hang.
Let me take a ten-minute recess.
That's fine.
Uh, Mac, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess. Uh, our county attorney has something he has to take care of outside right now. We're gonna take a ten-minute recess, please.